You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 16th, 2023 meeting of the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Like to call to order the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting Wednesday, August 16th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. If everyone would like to stand up, say the pledge of allegiance.
President?
After we do the pledge, could we give a moment of silence for all the victims of the wildfires in Hawaii?
Steve, would you lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Present.
Commissioner Brzezinski.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Consider agenda.
President, can we move item K up to first? Ahead of A. And then I would approve the agenda as adjusted.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider approval of the July 19th, 2023 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims.
Yes, Commissioners, we have a payroll for the period ending August 4th, 2023 in the amount of $1,480,807.46. And then operating expense claims revised from the agenda in the amount of $6,680,397.54. And move to approve the claims and payroll as presented, as adjusted.
So there is something that I would like to add to that because I know I got a question this morning, three, why it was so high. One of them, one of the problems is, or not a problem, but we're actually paying out the trustees. It's over $3 million. Do you have to break down for that of what we're paying the trustees?
We don't, we don't have that right with here.
And then the other thing is, is that there is a claim inside there. On April 6th of 2023, we actually have a check that we received from a liability insurance. And that was in the total of $16,986.08. It was from governmental interinsurance exchange. And that was for the vehicle for the 2023 Ford Escape. And it has the VIN number here. That was a vehicle that I was in an accident in. We also received the claim for KB Customs. And that is in the amount of $18,614.63. Now that has not been paid out yet because we couldn't get two commissioners to sign off. And so unfortunately, we have to have a, two commissioners in order to pay this claim. So when you deduct what we receive from the insurance company, we are, we are at $1,628.55. And that's because the claim was a little bit higher. We only pay a $1,000 deductible. And that we're still going to have to write the insurance company for the difference to make sure that we get that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
We would also clarify, per your question of us, the amount is regarding lit.
And wax.
Lit and what?
Wax bank.
Wax bank?
It's gas, I think, that the sheriff pays.
Okay. The $3.6 million, as you pointed out, Commissioner.
Okay. And so since we did write out this, this purchase order back on February 26th, and it's still being held as of today, will, will there be like, when will that be paid out to the vendor?
I don't believe that's being held. I believe that that's simply crossed in the mail that that's, that's already been authorized to be paid.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second the motion to approve the bills and payroll.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Just a point of discussion. Are you saying that the, the $1,620.55 is not included in these claims, correct?
No, we are paying out on it, but we pay a $1,000. After we collect our money from the insurance company, we have a $1,000 deductible.
Okay, so.
And so though it's $1,628, the claim that was submitted to the insurance company was slightly lower. For some reason, some parts had to be ordered and it was higher. But all we have to do is submit the difference and have the insurance company figure that out for us.
So regardless that taxpayers of LaPorte County are going to have to pay $1,620.55 because you had an accident in Chicago with your vehicle. Meaning that I, I didn't sign.
We're going to pay $1,000 because we have a $1,000 deductible. You went around town telling everybody, we don't have insurance, but yet we do, sir, right?
I didn't say we didn't have insurance.
You've told many folks that we have no insurance. Here's where you signed off when you accepted it. And this, the check was accepted on April 6th, 2023. The check was actually written on 3/17 of 2023. Here's your signature. Here's my signature.
I'm sorry, you, you said that there's a check that was written on March 17th of '23? The same day you got into the accident, they cut a check?
Oh, date of loss, excuse me. The check was written on 3/29. And here's.
A lot of this preexisted, this preexisted my appointment as attorney. And since I wasn't involved in it, I would suggest we just move on. Either approve the claim or we don't.
So we have a motion and a second on the table for the, all the claims of operating expenses, claims of $6,240,262.25.
$6,240,262.25, if I may correct you, $6,680,397.54 is the corrected total.
Yeah, that's, that's not what I have on mine, but okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Public comment.
Good evening. Steve Hoffield, 618, East Warner South, Milk Creek. Just a couple of quick comments. Is that working? We hear a lot of news, in the news lately about the Franklin Street Bridge again. A question I've got, with all the money being thrown around by the infrastructure project.
Excuse me, Mr. Hoffield, I'm sorry, this isn't a question session.
I'm just commenting.
Okay, it's a comment, not a question.
Yeah. Are we not looking at the infrastructure bill for this bridge? I mean, it thinks it would be better than the bypass situation. Maybe you guys have looked at it. I think Mitch Bishop does a great job for us. Maybe he has looked at it, we don't qualify, just, just a thought I had, so. And then, again, I hate to beat a dead horse. We just saw during claims, the bickering and the constant fighting has got to stop, folks. We are a laughing stock in the state. It's ridiculous. Every time, not tomorrow, the news is going to be full of this again. If you don't get along, that's fine, but you have a job to do. I don't get along with my township trustee that I serve on the board with, but we have a job to do, just as you guys have got a job to do. It must stop. In September 28th, there's a meeting at the Senate, State Senate, considering a workshop about local government reform. I plan on speaking at that. I've already cleared it with Donald State. This must stop. It has to stop. You have a job to do, please, everybody get along and do your job for the benefit of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, John Stamos, 218 Chickadee Trail. Wanted to, what prompted my visit here tonight was a concern about the lack of a noise ordinance in unincorporated LaPorte County. And what prompted my visit here tonight was a great conversation I had with Commissioner Brzezinski. I appreciate his response to my call. Professional and much appreciated. The need, he assured me that the county is, is on this situation. And it is a situation. In Michiana Shores, where I live, in the unincorporated section, a house was just recently built where this, a lot of money was put into it. And part of the construction included a $50,000 outdoor sound system. So these people are moving forward predicated on the fact that there's no noise ordinance and they're going to do whatever they want. It's a problem for those of us who are year-round residents, who want to enjoy our domiciles according to the right to quiet enjoyment that we enjoy as citizens here in the county. So I'm glad that you're on it. I'd love to know what the progress is at some point. I like to periodically check in. And something is, it's imperative, it's got to get done. And I know there are some overarching ordinance issues beyond, beyond noise. It's not so much of an issue where I live, but I can understand it. It's a glaring problem. But the noise ordinance is something that I'm particularly concerned about and a number of my neighbors as well. Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street, Michigan City. Hello, everyone. I'm here to set the record straight on the issue. I would have done this at the last meeting, but I was out of state. I never said one word that I received any email from Connie Grammerosa or any elected official. There was an email going around with this conspiracy going around about how African-Americans were freeded or some kind of plot. I never said not one time, Mr. Haney, I let him come up with his explanation, that is totally untrue. I never told that to him at all. I never told that to the attorney or any other elected official or anyone else in the state of, in this county. My next point I would like to make, deals with personnel issues. So I won't say people's names. I just get it to this point where, where, where I like to be here. This is not an attack on anyone, it's just questions I would like to know, especially after I seen that email that's been generating around. I don't know how it got out, but it was pretty disturbing. Discipline. I seen a couple of my friends get fired from county jobs. And I was wondering, how do we go from, one, we have five steps according to the county policy? We have five step, oral reprimand, written reprimand, written reprimand with days suspended, demolition and termination. We go straight to termination. And I don't understand why. People are not given a chance to have a chance to correct their undesirable behavior or tone or whatever it is that you, you would like for them to have. This is America. We have people, they deserve due process and they have rights. I don't know why you do job interviews or do the evaluations and you don't allow people to sign them or give them a chance to correct the problem that you may see. That's a very disturbing issue for me. I just, it don't sit well with me at all. And then this is no knock on the person you, I guess you already hired, hired her, the new secretary for the commissioners. Kind of crazy that she's here already. And I don't have nothing against Diane, I like, I like her. Always have, always will, like all of you guys. I listen, as I come into these meetings all the time, how Mr. Haney, especially Mr. Haney. I heard Mr. Brzezinski said a few times, when a job come open, why don't we post it? Why wasn't the secretary job posted? I, I don't understand what's going on. When Monique Thomas, when Monique Thomas job came open, nobody wanted to hire. She's still got a title, she's still got the Antrim title on her name. And then we, we farmed out. We spent $15,000 to try to find somebody to unseat that position. Here, the person gets the job. No interview, no process taking place. The, the person that was removed wasn't even terminated yet officially. I don't understand the situation. It's not a criticism, it's just, the public has the right to know. We in the county, as county official, county residents, we like to know how the process supposed to work. It, it just, it saddens me and it makes me want to, I didn't want to believe anything I read when I read that email. And part of the email was basically saying that the county elected officials are being, it looks like they are practicing racism to a degree. I, I, and it's not verbatim, but that's what it was, that's what it said. They're being portrayed as bigots. When you do this kind of action right here, and it's kind of hard to say, hmm, could it be? Maybe you didn't open the job process up, I would have applied for the job. I know how to do a budget. I, I work at the Michigan City Housing Authority, I'm the president there. I've done a budget. I've done a budget in a couple of places. I just, I just don't understand, Mr. Brzezinski, why, Mr. Haney, why? We did not open this job up for everybody else when we do it for, for every other position. People being wrongfully terminated, not given a chance to correct their behavior or undesirable behavior is not fair. I've also heard comments that touching someone is an automatic termination. Well, we know that's not true because we had an incident at the garage. I thank you for the opportunity and the chance to speak. I don't mean no disrespect, but I am confused. You can speak to me off the camera. This is not, this, I feel like I'm, I'm part of the family here. I feel like I'm, I just would like to know why. And I don't need to know it in public. I just, this is my, this is how I feel, I'm hurt behind this. I was, I will stand here for anybody, black, white, you, them, I will stand for anybody if I see something like this. I don't pick and choose. With that being said, thank you, Mr. Brzezinski, I love your blazer and your tie combination. Great job. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Fly Nelson, Michigan City, Indiana. I noticed that I am one of the topics, points under considerations, letter K, on the agenda. And since I won't be able to speak under that, I am speaking during public comment. I am very disappointed in the whole process because I believe that I am being removed or terminated from this position solely on the basis of me not being trained properly. The main reason is why it all focuses on a budget. A budget that according to my job description was not in my job description. However, according to my job description, it says, "The confidential secretary to the Board of Commissions compiles data and collects information for special reports and projects and assists with annual budget preparation." Assist, not present or prepare. That is what the job description says, period. Because the commission president, Connie Grammerosa, felt that her image was tainted, being tainted about the budget and about being called out in the budget hearing. I feel that she's blaming or putting the blame on me and I'm the scapegoat. I'm not a dummy, by far. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting. I made the dean's list several times. I have a bachelor's degree in theology. I was a class valedictorian. There are several number of things as the administrative assistant that I was forced to be a part of or brought into. And because I was put in a hard position, I felt like there were a lot of inappropriate things taken under the direction of the president-commissioner Connie Grammerosa. However, that was my job, even put in a position where I was made to go against the other commissioners, like spying on them, keeping track of when they coming in, who talking to them, who came in the office to speak to them, et cetera. Okay. County policy. When I look at the policy, I was never given a performance evaluation. On June 26th, at the council meeting, Commissioner Grammerosa asked me to attend. She was fighting for me a pay increase, so I don't understand what took place. The policy states that there is a disciplinary form of action. She went from zero to 100. Just terminated me because she wanted someone in there to do the things that I was not trained to do or because she was feeling frustrated and overwhelmed. She wanted me to do her job while she run her piece of place of business. When the auditor.
Now, these are actual personal attacks now, so.
Excuse me, I'm talking.
We're at the point.
These are not, these are my comments. This is public comment.
This is public comment, not to cast aspersions on people or opinions on people. Typically, the policy has been three minutes. We've let that slide, but you can make your comment. This isn't a time to cast aspersions on people or motives. Thank you.
Point taken. But anyway, I wish you well, Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Grammerosa on the night in question of your car accident. Like I asked you, are you sure you going out with them? Remember that? Are you sure you going? But you went anyway. And you were, at least you told me.
Again, these are public comment, these are public.
I just wanted to say that and put that out there.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? Public comments on Zoom? Any public comments on Zoom? Hearing no more public comments. Moving on to old, our department heads. Department head comments.
Good evening, I'm Heather Stevens, LaPorte County Clerk. I've noticed the past, well, I had some public meetings in here at night when we were working on the vote center plan. And guys, we're having public meetings behind a locked door. And to me, this is, this is an issue for me because I had people that literally could not get in. So I don't know if this is something that we can look at and resolve. I don't know why the buildings can't be unlocked when we're here having a public meeting. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Don't lock the door for me. Well, as you know, the item audit has come back. In the MS4 stormwater permit, as it's issued under the Clean Water Act, there are five minimum control measures. There used to be six, but they combined two of them that you need to meet to be compliant with the permit. Unfortunately, the county had unable to meet most of them. So what the process is now, and I spoke with item today, they've given the county 30 days to September 15th to develop a plan. This is just the opportunity that we, you put together what you're going to do, how you're going to do it. So Stormwater Board goes in this, new hirerees go in this, and then we send that to item for their approval. And if they don't approve it, then we come back and we do it again. But it's not actually permit compliance. Once they approve this, then we have to move towards creating a stormwater quality management plan, water quality characterization, illicit discharge, outfall inspection. So right now, it's a 30-day window to get the first response to item. Thank you.
Ella Builderback, recorder. Just a quick update, I've been doing some cleanup in my vault, getting ready for a project to have the books deacidified, basically protect them from damage. So I've been able to get rid of a bunch of old furniture and getting ready to move some equipment. Unfortunately, the area we're going to use to store it just has been refinished. The floors just done. So we're waiting for that. And then the, I approached commissioners about four chairs that are antique. Unfortunately, when I talked to the museum, they already have some of those. So I'll have to find a new home for them, but that's it for now. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department heads. Any department heads on Zoom?
Nobody else.
Okay, moving on.
I would say if nobody else, I, this past week, I did a tour of this building to see what progress is being made from fixing the flood damage. As we all know, it's been held up for five weeks. Had that not happened, it would have been, Steve Ira, we'd have been in your office by now. And the Sheriff's Department on the north side would have been pretty close. But they're, they're making great progress now. And we're thinking that we got another issue we have to fix with Servpro. But once we get that done, they should be, start moving, moving in here in a couple of weeks. So they're, they're making really good progress. But what a giant mess. It's unfortunate that it got held up for five weeks. And also, not it.
Okay, closing department head comments, old business. Moving on to new business. So as we said, we were going to move K up to the top. Consider ratifying president-commissioner's removal of Deborah Fly Nelson as commissioner, commission administrative assistant and approving rehire or reappointment of former commissioner's assistant, administrative assistant Diane Gonzalez.
To approve?
I'll, I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
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 I need to refuse.
Okay.
Recused, to recuse.
Right back to A. Consider permission for LaPorte County Wastewater District to use county fairgrounds to host a tire amnesty event on September 16th, 2023.
Motion, no. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That's great.
Consider permission for Ella Builderback and Chief Deputy Angie Rose to attend conference from October 2nd to the 4th, 2023 in Davenport, Iowa.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider permission to approve the council for additional appropriations due to a budget, to budget shortfalls.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commis, consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriations for part-time assistants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider Bridge 214, bridge replacement contract with SJCA engineers.
Motion to approve.
Second, and I'll just say, we saw these come across and they were bid out and inspected. Uh, second, and I'll just say, we saw these come across, and they were bid out and specked out properly.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider Bridge seven, uh, consider Bridge seven, bridge replacement contract with HWC engineers.
Motion to approve.
Same with this LPA, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider permission to approach the council to spend from non-reverting fund for remote starters on transport vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider council's recommendation of Paul Vicari as MS four coordinator, Chris Haven as MS four administrator, and Mike Pollan as MS four program supervisor enforcement officer.
Motion to approve.
Uh, just for clarification, I spoke with the executive from the council. Um, they, they did approve funding, but they didn't recommend any of these, so, clarification sake.
Okay. I'll second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Consider seeking, uh, council funding for renewal of contract with Butler, Fearman, and Siffis for item EPA compliance issues for MS four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, consider adopting MS four advisory board and appointing a member.
Motion to appoint Commissioner Grammerosa to that position.
Just curious, um, as to, uh, the change here, I don't think, uh, either of you have any NIMS or ICS training? No? Um, I know, I'm, I'm almost positive you...
This is an advisory board?
I'm almost certain you don't have a level two hazmat certification, do you?
This is a, this is an advisory board.
Advisory board, is this a new board we're creating now?
So this is, this is something that the council has already, uh, appointed. Uh, the council has already appointed, um, Earl Cunningham. And we're just looking for someone for this advisory board. I'll step down and I'll second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Nay, um, did, who, who created, I, if they appointed to this board, who created it?
We're creating it right now. We're adopting an advisory board, so prior to this, there used to be, um, a joint session, uh, board, and it included all the different, um, entities that were a part of it. Now, would you like to come up?
To make sure that you all understand, initially, in two thousand... In two thousand and six, when the permits were issued, the MS fours identified in Laporte County, which were the county, the city of Laporte, the town of Long Beach, the town of Trail Creek, and the city of Michigan City, all came together and had one co-permit with the state of Indiana. Um, in twenty twenty-one, when the new general administrative permits came out, each entity decided to do their own. So they are no longer partnering unless they develop a memorandum of understanding. So, it developing a stormwater advisory board, um...
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Reggie, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, I think you're thinking of something else. This is, uh, EMA, uh, board and hazmat board.
No.
That we're discussing right now.
No, we're not, we're discussing...
MS four.
MS four.
My, that's what mine says.
J?
To...
J?
I don't have a J here. Look, I don't have J.
I'm not always on the right track, so it could be A.
It'd be scary.
I don't have my red shoes on today, what?
We just, we just did the approval.
Always keep in mind that under the federal regulation, the highest elected official is the MS four operator. You can do whatever you want. If you want to create a board to review or advise, you can do that, and then they ultimately would report back to you, and that would be something we would identify in this next, um, plan review for item, we'd put it in there, as long as they approve. But the board's, um, authority really rests with you.
Okay.
Um, ju- ju- just curious, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rosinski, what, what, what was the motion that you made that was voted on? Apologize. I, I thought you said EMA.
This was considered adopting MS four advisory board and appointing a member. I appointed Commissioner Grammerosa.
Okay, uh, I, I apologize, I don't know why, I thought I heard you say EMA board, my apologies, I'm sorry.
So we have a motion and a, and a second, and then we vote it two to one.
I, I will, if it's allowable, I will vote affirmative in that as well. Change my vote to, cuz I apologize, I misheard what Commissioner Rosinski said.
Just on the record, reflect, Commissioner Haney rescinds his prior nay vote and is voting yes.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. And for...
I apologize for mishearing that, I'm sorry.
And madam president, I just want everyone to know, I've spoken to all of you individually. I've spent a lot, a good amount of time with Mr. Pollan and with Mrs. Corthals, and we're working on it, and we're working on making sure we have the structure down pat. And, uh, the work is going into it, that's why I can assure you, we're really focused on coming into compliance, which, which I'm confident we will, thank you.
Think we will too.
Thank you.
I mean, we were, we were there a couple of years back, and, and Mr. Pollan helped us out with that, and Reggie's been really helpful in the last few years, so I really have a lot of confidence that we're gonna move this forward and get this cleared up, thank you. Okay, and the last one is, consider commissioner's appointment of EMA board and hazmat board.
I would move to appoint, uh, Joe Haney, uh, as the appointment to the EMA board and hazmat board.
Is there a second? Dice for a lack a second.
I would consider appointment of, uh, Commissioner Rosinski to both boards.
Apologize, Mr. Commissioner Rosinski, this is where, uh, earlier, I thought you said EMA earlier for here. Um, as I was, as I was saying, um, I don't believe you have any NIMS or ICS training. I don't think so, I don't believe you have a level one or two hazmat certification. I do. Um, I'm just curious why, uh, why, uh, why the change for this? Been working, we have a train derailment, uh, drill coming up, I've been working closely with our hazmat and EMA board on that, been to all the meetings, just curious as to, um, most, a lot of those early meetings happened while you were out of state, living down in Florida. Um, just curious why the change?
I was asked.
Really?
That motion on the floor.
I'll second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, I wanted to make, one of the hottest, hottest issues in the county right now is broadband. I, I want everybody to know, we are working very hard, there's several people are working very hard to bring broadband to more of the county. I like to bring it to all the county, but, uh, baby steps. So there's a meeting here Friday at one o'clock, we're gonna have some people who, uh, are involved in that motion, uh, in that issue, to, to bring broadband to the county. So, uh, it, it's open meeting, one o'clock here Friday. Uh, come on down, find out what's going on with broadband, make yourself known. Um, I know the one company, Surf Air, is putting in like two hundred and fifty miles of, of fiber. Uh, that's a lot. They might even get to Mill Creek, never know. So, uh, you're invited, other than that, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Same.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.